It's just past 6:30 on, I'd like to call the November 14th, 2017 Meeting of Milledgeville City Council to order. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
We do have a quorum. I'd like to ask everyone to stand as we, for the prayer and the pledge. Bow our heads, please. "Lords, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Milledgeville and Baldwin County. Continue to remind us that we are all here today. All we accomplishment, all we accomplish is for your greater glory to you and for the service of our city. We ask these things in your name. Amen."
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for First item on the agenda tonight is a, is our awards and presentation. We do have two proclamations. Do we have? We don't have anyone here from the, representing the Arbor Days, but I'd like to present this proclamation to the city. Whereas the city of Milledgeville is a better place due largely to our beautiful, healthy trees because trees enrich the lives of our citizens and make our city more attractive and inviting place for residents, businesses, and visitors to work, play, and live. And whereas trees add beauty in all seasons, they bring us new life and renewal in spring. They give us cooling shade in summer's heat, give us the multicolored falls, and provide shelter for food and wildlife, even in the depths of winter. Whereas healthy trees in good quantity pose many benefits, which include establishing a renewable resource, providing an economic advantage to our state, reducing soil erosion, moderating temperatures, cleaning the air, and giving life-sustaining oxygen. And whereas it is critical that each generation appreciate the benefit of trees and work toward assuring that their generation creates an abundance of trees and vegetation for future generations. Now therefore, I, Gary Elthrow, as the mayor of the city of Milledgeville, do proclaim Friday, December 1st, 2017, as Arbor Day in the city of Milledgeville, a day to celebrate the importance of trees in our community and to plant for the future. Arbor Day President, proclamation. Is Ms. Bailey available? Ma'am?
We got the whole question.
Would y'all like to come up?
Good, good.
Haven't seen you in a while.
I know.
Good to see you too.
I called you up front. Get used to it. Just right there, be fine. Whereas 2017 marks the 50th anniversary of St. Christopher's Hospice in London, widely recognized as the first modern-day hospice organization, and the 35th anniversary of the Medicare hospice benefit in the United States. Whereas hospice and palliative care offer those that serve the high quality of care delivered in an interdisciplinary team of skilled professionals and trained volunteers that includes physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, spiritual care providers, and more. Whereas the hospice and palliative care philosophy places the needs of the individual at the center of care, allowing patients and family caregivers to focus on the quality of life surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illness. Whereas every year, more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. Yet more than 40 percent of the Medicare beneficiaries receive care for 14 days or less, considered too short a time for fully, to fully benefit from the range of services that hospice offers. Whereas each year, hospice saves Medicare more than $2 billion by providing solutions for physicians, care to patients, and comfort to families. Whereas a growing body of peer-reviewed research indicates that timely access to hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalizations and emergency room visits and increase quality of life for patients and family caregivers. Whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the health care that they would want to receive if they were unable to speak for themselves. Whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with families, loved ones, and their health care professionals. So that, now therefore, Gary Elthrow, as mayor of the city of Milledgeville, do hereby proclaim November 19th of 2017 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. And the city of Milledgeville encourages citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. All that on there?
He should've known, Terrell.
I gotta take advantage of this, I'm gonna be... Thank you. Thank you all y'all there. Thank you. Thank you. That's right. Thank you. That's your pleasure.
I asked what's that right there? Blinking red.
The secret handshake, not. So much for being hoarse. So you've all received copies of the minutes of the October 24th, 2017 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any corrections? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
We have nothing to discuss under old business tonight, and we'll move directly into new business. First item on the agenda tonight under new business is an appeal hearing for an alcohol license application. Hearing no objection, I'd like for this to be the last item considered tonight. Is that okay? Moving on, I'd ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 1710043 by caption.
A resolution to become a member of the Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency, GIRMA, and participate in one or more of GIRMA's funds.
Having heard the resolution, do I hear a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
And that motion carries. We do have a few alcohol license renewals tonight. Hearing no objection, I'd like to ask the clerk to present all of them en masse and then ask that we adopt them en masse as well.
Lou's P. King Restaurant, 2485 North Columbia Street, for beer and wine consumption on premises. El Tequila Grill Incorporated, doing business as El Tequila Grill, 168 Garrett Way, beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. 1835 Barbecue Company LLC, doing business as Georgia Bob's Barbecue. 116 West Hancock Street, beer consumption on premises. Apple, Georgia LLC, doing business as Applebee's, 106 Robertson Mill Road, beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Sedexo Management Incorporated, doing business at Old Governor's Mansion, 120 South Clark Street, beer, wine, liquor, consumption on premises. Sedexo Management Incorporated, doing business at Centennial Center, 251 South Clark Street, beer and wine and liquor consumption on premises. Sedexo Management Incorporated, doing business at Magnolia Ballroom, 331 West Hancock Street, beer, wine, liquor, consumption on premises. Blazin' Wings Incorporated, doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings, 2472 North Columbia Street, beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Eckerd Corporation, Corporation, doing business, Right Aid Number 11839, 2400 North Columbia Street, beer and wine package to go. Quick Stop 3, 2653 North Columbia Street, beer and wine package to go. All American Quality Foods Incorporated, doing business Food Depot, 1810 North Columbia Street, beer and wine package to go. Afpan Enterprises LLC, doing business as Hop In, 1687 North Columbia Street, beer, wine package to go. Flash Foods LLC, doing business as Flash Foods, number 231, 1935 North Columbia Street, beer, wine, package to go. Aldi Incorporated, Georgia, number 9, 1978 North Columbia Street, beer, wine, package to go. S&amp;H Short Stop, 891 South Wilson Street, beer, wine, package to go. Prit 711 LLC, doing business as Sci Food Mart, 1051 North Jeff Street, beer, wine, package to go. Araya K. Incorporated, doing business as Discount Tobacco, 640 South Wilkinson Street, beer, wine, package to go. The Beverage Marketplace, 2910 Heritage Place Suite A, for beer, wine, liquor, package to go. Eagle Package Store, 700 North Jeff Street, beer, wine, liquor, package to go. K&amp;S Short Stop, 1660 North Columbia Street, beer, wine, package to go. And HAC Incorporated, doing business as Pigly Wiggly, 731 North Wayne Street, beer, wine, package to go. And that concludes the renewals so far.
So you've heard the applications, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
In discussion. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
That motion carries. Due to a pending expiration of an existing term on the Baldwin County Housing Authority Board, I would like to reappoint Jacqueline Larkin to her current position as a resident member. I don't need a motion on that, do I, Jimmy?
No, you do not.
So we'll move on to the evidentiary hearing. So this is an evidentiary hearing to consider the appeal of applicant Hasmuk H. Patel as Hasmuk LLC DBA Player's Sports Bar and Grill located at 2627 North Columbia in the Super End and Suites Hotel. The applicant, Mr. Patel, is appealing the denial of his September 8th, 2017 application for alcoholic beverage license for the year 2017, which was disapproved by Milledgeville Police Chief Jace Wykert for serious and sustained criminal activity occurring at the business location designated in Mr. Patel's application. In accordance with the Section 6223(c) of the city's Code of Ordinances, a consumption on premises alcohol license shall be, should not be issued without first being approved by the chief of police, the building official, city marshal, and the fire chief. This appeal hearing is being held pursuant to OCGA Section 332, which provides that upon timely application, any applicant aggrieved by the decision of the governing authority regarding an alcohol permit or license shall be afforded a hearing with an opportunity to present evidence and cross-examine opposing witnesses. On September 8th, 2017, the applicant submitted to the city of Milledgeville an application for alcohol beverage license for the year 2017 for consumption on premises for beer, wine, and liquor, and Sunday sales for Hasmuk LLC DBA Player's Sports Bar and Grill located at 2627 North Columbia in the Super End and Suites Hotel. A copy of the application has been marked as city exhibit number one, and unless there is an objection to city exhibit one, will be admitted into evidence.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we probably need to have the applicant come down front, because it'll be up to the applicant and the city through me to object to any particular exhibits and so forth. So if Mr. Patel wants to come down front, and Chief Wykert...
Let me give this to you. This is the city's...
Thank you.
So do you want me to read the paragraph about the city exhibit one?
Yes, if you would, please.
On September 8th, 2017, the applicant submitted to the city of Milledgeville an application for alcohol beverage license for the year 2017 for consumption on premises for beer, wine, and liquor, and Sunday sales for Hasmuk LLC DBA Player's Sports Bar and Grill located at 2627 North Columbia in the Super End and Suites Hotel. A copy of the application has been marked as city exhibit one, and unless there is an objection, city exhibit one will be admitted into evidence. Is there any objection?
No objection from the city.
On October 13th, 2017, the city attorney calls to be delivered to the applicant, Mr. Patel, a notice of denial of issuance of alcohol license. A copy of that notice has been marked as city exhibit two, and unless there is an objection, city exhibit two will be admitted into evidence. Any objection? City?
No objection.
On October 17th, 2017, the applicant, Mr. Patel, delivered a letter to the city clerk requesting a hearing on the denial of the application for a 2017 alcohol license. A copy of the applicant's request for the hearing has been marked as city exhibit three, and unless there is an objection to city exhibit three, it will be admitted into evidence. Any objection?
No objection by the city.
On November 8th, 2017, the city attorney calls to be delivered to the applicant, Mr. Patel, a notice of hearing confirming the date, time, and place of this hearing. A copy of the notice of hearing has been marked as city exhibit four, and unless there is an objection, city exhibit four will be admitted into evidence. Any objection?
No objection.
Are there any other preliminary matters that we need to take up before hearing the evidence on this matter?
None on behalf of the city.
Now, I'd like to briefly review with everyone the ground rules for the hearing. In accordance with OCGA Section 3-2, I'm sorry, 3-3-2, this will be an evidentiary hearing whereby both sides will have an opportunity to present evidence and cross-examine opposing witnesses. The burden of proof in this hearing rests with the city, and therefore, the city will present its case first. After the city presents its case, the applicant, Mr. Patel, has the opportunity to present his evidence, any evidence that he may want counsel to consider. Mr. Patel, during the city's presentation of its case, you will be afforded an opportunity to cross-examine the city witnesses. In other words, you will be able to ask city witnesses questions. City will likewise be able to ask Mr. Patel and his witnesses questions when it comes time for Mr. Patel to present witnesses if he so chooses. Each side will have the opportunity to make an opening statement with the city going first after the close of the evidence. Each side will have an opportunity to make a closing statement with applicant, Mr. Patel, going first. After the evidence is closed and the parties have made their closing statements, the chair will entertain motions from counsel in the form of either upholding the decision of the city denying Mr. Patel's application for the issuance of a 2017 alcohol license, or granting Mr. Patel's appeal and approving the issuance of a 2017 alcohol license. As this is an evidentiary hearing, and although we are not required to strictly adhere to the rules of evidence, I would ask that both sides keep their questions and arguments germane and relevant to the issues presented by the applicant's appeal. During the course of the hearing, members of council are encouraged to ask questions. I will request that you allow the parties to finish questioning the witness before you are recognized by the chair to ask your questions. Anything else before we get started? Mr. Jordan, would you like to make an opening statement?
Just very, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I think as everyone realizes, this is a, an appeal by Mr. Patel to open a sports bar and restaurant, I assume, at the, what, the Super End and Suites, which some of us remember as the Old Holiday Inn on North Columbia. When that application was made in September, of course, it was circulated to the police chief and, and the building official and the fire chief, and we don't really have a city marshal at this point, but relative to code enforcement. Chief Wykert, first of all, being familiar with the extent of the criminal activity at this particular location, at the hotel, the restaurant and, and sports bar not in business as of, as of yet, but at the hotel, being familiar with that activity, did his job, his responsibility, which was to review from a public safety standpoint, and being consistent with Code Section 6-223 of the city code, which I have included in your notebooks, where it states that if in the city council's judgment, circumstances are such that the granting of a license would not be in the best interest of the general public, then those circumstances may be grounds for denying the application. What you're going to hear tonight from Chief Wykert in particular, and potentially some of the members of his department, is evidence of serious, ongoing criminal activity at this hotel for the past two years or so. It is a matter that has been discussed repeatedly with Mr. Patel, and so I expect him to acknowledge tonight that he's aware of many of these incidents that have occurred. In your notebook, you also find exhibits that are Exhibit 5 through 20 that are going to be briefly discussed by Chief Wykert here tonight, of incidents, incidents of drug use, incidents of prostitution that have occurred more than once at Mr. Patel's facility, at his hotel. And what this hearing is about tonight is whether or not, in keeping with Section 6-223 of our city code, whether or not Chief Wykert's decision to not approve the issuance of this license based on this ongoing and continuous criminal activity at this site, whether or not that is grounds for denying Mr. Patel this application for beer, wine, liquor consumption on the premises, and Sunday sales, which is what he has applied for, as you'll see from exhibit one. So that's what we're going to present tonight on behalf of the city.
Got you. Mr. Patel, would you like to make an opening statement?
If you would stand up, Mr. Patel, at the mic there, please.
At this point, I would like to say it because I have no record of doing to me. It's police job is to be, get cut down these drugs and prostitutes, and I am helping them to get rid of it. It's not in my hands or anything to, to get all drug people or prostitutes. It's nothing I could help. Whatever I could help to the police, I did. You can ask all these policemen, I'm helping them or not. I did the best I could to help them to get rid of it. Any ideas they're giving us, we will do it. There's nothing I'm going against police or anybody. I don't do drugs, I don't do alcohol, there's no criminal of me that. That's all I want to tell you that. On that, this question right now, after this, we'll talk.
Sir?
All these, you want to do me go all through?
It's just uptime for you.
Okay.
Mr. Jordan, you may call your first witness.
We would call Chief Dre Swyker.
Chief Swyker, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in that this, this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, swear to God?
I do.
Chief Swyker, will you state your position with the city of Milledgeville?
Dre Swyker, chief of police, city of Milledgeville.
Okay. And I want you to take a few moments to explain to mayor and council the process that you go through in evaluating the suitability of an applicant for issuance of an alcohol license, particularly a consumption on the premises license.
Certainly, this is pretty a simple application process, where an applicant comes in and he applies for either package to go or consumption on premises. He goes through filling out basic forms of who's going to be the manager, who's going to be in charge of the liquor license. He goes through a background check, and obviously, if they meet approval, then it goes through certain building and zoning, the fire department, and of course, it comes to me.
And when it comes to you, what is your process? What are, what are you looking for in determining whether to approve the applicant or disapprove the applicant?
Well, I look at the location, obviously, what, what the establishment wanting to do. Obviously, Mr. Patel wants to do a, a restaurant where any person of any age can come, and I look at previous calls we've had there, whether it's been a, you know, we've had problems there, where, you know, where there can be problems, and I assess that from incident reports that we have on hand.
And let me ask if you could explain how selling of alcohol, consumption on the premises, impacts a place of business or an area where there is already significant criminal activity?
Well, obviously, package to go is, obviously, I know, package to go is you buy the alcohol and you leave. Consumption on premises is you can stay there, you can consume alcohol, you can watch TV, you can have fellowship with other people. Obviously, the more you consume alcohol, the more problems, obviously, you're going to probably incur. But that's the, the main reason as far as consumption on premises, you're, you're looking at more strenuency as far as, you know, who else is going to be involved? Is kids going to be involved? Is parents going to be involved? How long are they going to be there consuming alcohol? So that's the, basically, the timeline.
Now, I want to refer you to city exhibit five that's in your, in your notebook. It's entitled, "Recent Drug Activity at the Super End and Suites, 2627 North Columbia Street." And would like for you to review that exhibit with mayor and council.
So looking at, you know, I basically went back, basically, three years and looked at all the activity that was actually happening there. And we went from a, a big gamut of misdemeanor violations, and what I mean by that is, you know, public drunk, disorderly, to prostitution. know, public drunk, disorderly, to prostitution, selling of narcotics. And narcotics, what I mean by marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamines, and heroin. We went through, we've had several drug investigations there, we locked up several people for misdemeanor possession up to trafficking.
And can you just kind of go through very quickly plaintiff's, city's Exhibit 5, excuse me, as to the specific incidents?
So I'm assuming, Mr. Jimmy, we're on Exhibit 5, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look in your notebook, I mean, it's basically go from, if you look at the case number, when it says 2015, that starts in year 2015, and it obviously goes down 2016. But, you know, we went through, you obviously have that there with the suspects, we've arrested for methamphetamines, drug paraphernalia, keeping on going down. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of drug activity. In 2016, we actually had an armed robbery there. So we went from a gamut of misdemeanor things to, obviously, you see the, what's going on there. I mean, it's a meth haven for our community. We obviously know there's a problem there. My guys work this. This is not only customers, let me put this in perspective, this is not only customers, these are employees that is involved also. So we've made arrests, we've, obviously, Mr. Patel and I have talked, and there's a big issue here. I mean, we need to try to curb that. We can only be there when we get called. We obviously know through my drug investigators, and obviously, they're willing to speak as far as when someone wants to buy drugs in Millisville, especially on the methamphetamine side, this is the place to go. And that was my reasoning for denying the alcohol license. You know, if you're going to open up an establishment where people of any age can come, you're obviously going to have people out of town come, or people local come, and this environment still exists at this hotel.
Let me ask you, if you look at City Exhibits 6 through 20, are those additional incidents to the ones that, obviously, there are more than the ones that you have listed on City Exhibit 5?
Correct.
So these are additional incidents that have taken place at this location?
All of the exhibits have taken place at this establishment.
And Exhibit 6 through 20, those are exhibit, those are incidents involving a variety of criminal activity?
That's correct, and a lot of stuff is still ongoing.
Exhibit 6 through 20, you know, those are true and correct copies of instance reports that have been prepared by members of your department relative to criminal conduct activity that has occurred at this location, 2627 North Columbia?
That is correct, yes, sir.
That's all I have of Chief Swiker. I would tender city's Exhibits 5 through 20 to be made part of the record.
Mr. Patel, would you like to cross-examine the witness, please? No, we do not. Mr. Patel, do you have any questions? You don't have any questions. Mr. Jordan, you have any other witnesses?
No, sir, that's all we have.
Mr. Patel, do you have any witnesses? Would you like to call?
Yes, I want to talk to Steve, who can explain all this study. He's going to be running this, my place, bar and restaurant, he's going to be running. We already studied all this, we talked about it all this, and we realized those are all few issues at the hotel.
You just need to let him go ahead.
We will explain there.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Please state your name and address, please.
First name is Steve, last name is Gubitosi, G-U-B-I-T-O-S-I. My address is 5 Howard Street, Pembroke, New Hampshire.
Need to raise your right hand, and it's one in. Do you swear to affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so if you got?
I do.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Patel has asked me to speak for him, because as you can see, that sometimes there is a language barrier. None of which, I have to say, is my personal opinion. What I'm about to tell you is basically everything Mr. Patel wants me to relay to the board. He has gone through this, which was provided by the city attorney via the Chief of Police, and not everything in here is drug-related, every one of these incidents. Secondly, there's not one incident in here that relates to prostitution at all. And there isn't anything in there that says anything about any employees that were involved in any drug activity. Now, I know, this I can personally say, I know for a fact that Mr. Patel does not tolerate drug use at his place of business. Mr. Patel asked me to help him, basically, I'm a management consultant, to theme the restaurant, design the restaurant, get it up and running, hire, train, and then it'll be turned over to him. That's my job. The second day that I was there, I walked into the restaurant, and Mr. Patel was in an argument in the hallway with a gentleman there, and I just stood there for a minute to make sure there wasn't going to be any problems, and then I walked into the restaurant. When Mr. Patel got done, he came into the restaurant, and I said, "Harry, what was that all about?" And he said, "This gentleman's got drugs on my property," and I told him to get out. And he was yelling at the gentleman to leave. That's the only thing I could say, from my own eyewitnessing. What he wants to relay is that the Superend is basically located on 9.2 acres in the city of Millisville, is the largest hotel in the city of Millisville. That 9.2 acres is comprised of five buildings, three of which are hotel rooms. The fourth building is a maintenance shop, and the fifth building is where the restaurant and banquet rooms are. They're not connected. Furthermore, he wants me to tell you that it's two separate entities. It's one corporation for the restaurant and one corporation for the hotel. He also has plans in the future to build a mini strip mall on the property. So his question is actually twofold. If he builds a mini strip mall on the property, and somebody wants to rent, lease space there to open up another restaurant or a liquor store, does that mean that they're going to be denied an alcohol license because of what may or may not be going on on the other side of the property? And that's how he feels with the restaurant. It's two separate entities. That would pretty much be like saying, for an example, and this was the example that was proposed to me, Papa John's Pizza Place, their drivers get caught delivering pizza and drugs. Does that mean that when the city is not going to renew the alcohol license for the pickle barrel because of what's going on on the other side of the parking lot? Mr. Patel understands that there are issues there, and he's been working hard to straighten those issues out. He has told me that he has worked with the police, and in fact, has given them rooms in order to conduct operations there in order to catch some drug dealers. He feels kind of slighted, actually, because he's been helping them, and his comment is that it's coming back to bite him. The restaurant, basically, would be no different than the brick downtown, Buffington's, Applebee's, Ruby Tuesday's, it's all the same thing. It's not a nightclub, per se, or actually, it's not a nightclub at all. It's a full-service restaurant, everything from french fries to ribeyes. Mr. Patel has instituted a plan in order to take care of these issues, and he would also like to say that anything that occurred prior to August 16th of 2016, he wasn't in control of the hotel back then. He didn't gain full control of the hotel until August 16th, 2016. Now, there are, in all fairness, there are incidents that are after that date, but there are a couple of incidents prior to that date, and if you read through them, they don't all pertain to drugs, and there are some drug issues that did not occur on the property. For instance, one person was stopped, I think, on a bicycle that was just pulling into the yard. He was questioned what he was doing. He was, he told the officer that he had a room at the Econo Lodge with some friends, and they got in an argument, and he decided to leave there to go up to the Superend to see if he could get a room there. Now, this conversation is happening at the edge of the parking lot. One thing led to another, the officer conducted the investigation, started questioning this person, and revealed that he had some drugs on him. I don't remember what the particular drug was, but it was a minuscule amount, like a personal use type thing, but yet, that's in there, and it's really not relevant. Mr. Patel also wanted me to tell you that, being that it's a separate entity, if the license is issued, obviously, he falls under the city alcohol ordinances, and if there's any violation of those, a suspension, fine, revocation, whatever could be recommended by the chief and his agency or any of his officers. So there are whole other set of rules. And he also wanted me to relay to you, speaking of those rules, and I have a hard time with this because I don't really like calling anybody out, but I think we all woke up one morning to a big raid downtown of a certain business, and there were some drugs found at that location. Whether or not they were in the particular restaurant or bar, I guess really doesn't matter. There was some news reports that it was in an apartment in the same building. Fact of the matter, it was on the property, yet, as far as Mr. Patel knows, nobody from the city ever recommended any type of suspension, revocation, fine, or hearing on that particular business, and I think we all know who I'm speaking about. Other than that, I have nothing to say. And thank you for your time. And Mr. Patel, or he also wanted me to relay his plan. All lighting in the hotel has been upgraded to LED lighting. There are 35 cameras currently installed with a plan to, I think it was either 10 or 20 more to be installed. There are now foot patrols of the property on the overnight shift, three times a night, at least. Minimum of two on the evening shift, and the day shift, he pretty much takes care of himself. He also does walk around during the evening hour also. Traffic in the parking lot has been directed in one direction, which is also a help. Employees at the front desk will be trained to engage more with people that are coming to register at the hotel, to engage them in conversation. I see that, you know, from Baldwin County, are you having a problem with your house? Why are you, you know, renting a loan? You have a problem in your house, furnace, well, whatever. Those are also indicators. Body language is an indicator, eyes are an indicator, motor skills are an indicator. They're all going to be trained in those aspects. And actually, we would like to, Mr. Patel would like to pair with the police department to have them assist in some of that training, if it's possible. Mr. Patel has no problem working with the police department at all. Mr. Patel would ask the board to kindly issue his alcohol license and fall under the rules of the alcohol ordinances of the city, and if there are any violations, he'll do what he has to do. And this all may all be for naught, because the restaurant might not even do well. There's going to be a six-month trial period, and that's the time period that I'm going to be there. If the numbers aren't correct, then it will close, and it won't even stay open. That's a touch-and-go thing. Nobody can tell what's going to happen with that issue. As far as underage people, it is a restaurant. You kind of don't have a choice. I mean, if you want to have people come in there with their children during the dinner hour, you have to let underage in. But it is his option, and we could discuss that further, just allow it 18 and above. But then you kind of get into a situation where now you're kind of making the place really a nightclub, and that's not what he's looking to do, not what he's looking to do at all. Anyway, Mr. Patel would ask that you kindly issue his alcohol license, fall under the rules and regulations of the alcohol ordinances, and if there are any problems, then obviously, he will be back, or he will surrender his license. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions at this witness?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I assume you're answering on behalf of Mr. Patel?
The things that we have discussed, if you throw a question at me that I haven't discussed with him?
You'll be able to ask him?
Yes. Like I said, this is not my opinion or anything.
Sure. So you're the, Mr. Patel is the current owner of the Superend and Suites?
Yes, as of August 16th, 2016.
Okay. And does he own any other hotels in Millisville, Baldwin County?
Uh, no.
Does he have any interest whatsoever in any other hotels in Millisville, Baldwin County?
Maybe, yes.
Which hotels would those be?
Depending on what comes on. As my son is running to the Econo Lodge.
The Econo Lodge?
My son is running. I'm thinking on his name.
You have, does Mr. Patel have any ownership interest in the Econo Lodge?
No.
No, actually, he does not. I know for a fact, as I went through this paperwork, the LLC is in his son's name, and it's no longer the Econo Lodge, there's been a name change, and they're going through a bunch of changes down there also.
Yes, because Mr. Patel familiar with the criminal activity ongoing at the former Econo Lodge?
He has heard, yes. And the...
The same type, the same type of criminal activity that's going on at the Superend and Suites?
I believe so, yes. And he is taking strides in order to alleviate that issue also.
But the issue has not been alleviated at either the Superend or the former Econo Lodge, has it?
Well, as far as we know, the Superend, there isn't anybody currently that's there that's under any type of investigation, as far as he knows.
And the ownership of the restaurant is going to be who?
It's going to be a separate entity, him, and I think he was discussing somebody else, but I'm not sure.
No, no, it's going to be only me now.
Are you going to have any ownership interest in the restaurant?
Oh, no, sir.
So you gave us a New Hampshire address?
Yes, sir.
And where are you, I assume that you're residing somewhere in Millisville, Baldwin County? County while you're here?
Well, right now, because of this job, I'm staying there.
At the Super Inn and Suites?
Right. But I was renting a house with a friend of mine when I was in a partnership in a restaurant in Covington, in Oxford.
And would you be the manager of the restaurant for those first six months?
Not really. Well, I guess you probably could say that for six months. I mean, it's basically, we're getting it up and running for six months. I'm in charge of getting it up and running, showing Mr. Patel the ins and outs and so on and so forth. And then it'll be up to him, basically, who will hire for a manager.
So, but you would agree with me that, over the past two years, this Super Inn and Suites has experienced a high rate of criminal activity?
I don't know if you'd call it a high rate of criminal activity.
Well, how would you describe it?
Well, I travel the world. And I will tell you that the hotel business in itself is a problem. It doesn't matter where you go. It doesn't matter if you're paying $60 a night for a room or if you're paying $1,500 a night for a room. As a matter of fact, if you're paying $1,500 a night for a room, it's a lot easier to get what you want, because you simply walk up to the concierge and you rip a $100 bill in half and you say to him, "I need a prostitute, I need a firearm, I need a quarter ounce of cocaine." And I guarantee you, within 30 minutes, you'll have three knocks on your door and the phone ringing, him wanting to know where the other half of that $50 bill is.
So how does that work at Super Inn and Suites? It doesn't take $1,500, does it?
I believe his rate is about 60 bucks or something. But-
So you split that in half?
Certainly, uh, cer-, well, certainly, Mr. Patel's not under investigation for-
I didn't say, Mr. Patel, what? You're the one that brought up going to the concierge of the hotel and getting what you want.
No, I'm saying, drugs in general at hotels, I mean, it's-
And there's no concierge here at this hotel, is there?
No, there isn't.
So you have to go to the manager if that's what you're looking for, right?
You would have to, or you would have to know the area. And you also want to take into consideration too, I mean, there are certain drug dealers that, they'll rent the hotel room, so they're not selling this stuff out of the house, so they don't get their property seized. So this is generally a problem in any hotel business. And the best hotel security in the entire world is in Las Vegas, Nevada. Now, I don't think, I don't think that they would have rented a room to a man that was going to commit the largest mass murder in the history of the United States if they knew what he was going to do. Mr. Patel contends that he doesn't know when these people are coming in, whether or not they're going to have drugs or attempt to sell drugs.
But it's not a matter of whether Mr. Patel knows it. He knows, though, that his hotel has a high rate of criminal activity.
He doesn't seem to think it's a high rate of criminal activity. And from what I read, it's, I mean, you could go through it yourself, I wouldn't exactly call it a high rate of criminal activity.
What would you call it?
Well, yeah, it's a rate of criminal activity. There's no doubt about that.
Look at all these reports, you will know this.
But what he's trying to say is that there's, what he's trying to say is that there's a rate of criminal activity at any hotel.
That's all I have.
Whether or not there is a bar slash restaurant on the property or not.
Members of counsel, any questions for this witness?
One question. You had mentioned that you're going to look at this as a six-month window. Why would you have to have alcohol if this is looked at as a family restaurant? You're wanting to have people of all ages in there. And it seems to me that that would be a situation that if he is certainly intent upon trying to clean up the business, that would be a good place to start. And, you know, if you're going to try to get people in there, maybe they're going to come for your food and not the alcohol.
It's true, but it's not designed as a buffet-type style thing. I know myself, I mean, I don't consume alcohol a lot, but if I'm going to go out and have a good steak or something, I want to have a drink. On the other hand, it is a sports-type thing. There are currently nine televisions or 10 televisions that have been hung up with a plan to hang up more. So it's kind of difficult for somebody, a group of people to come in and watch a football game on a Sunday afternoon and eat wings and not be able to order a glass of beer.
So I'm having a hard time understanding exactly what you're trying to open. Is it a family restaurant or is it a sports bar?
I guess the terminology for bar in certain parts of the country is a little-
If you drink, it's a bar.
Is a little bit different.
If you have a bar, it's a bar.
To me, a bar is just that. Like when I was at Cowboy Bill's, that's a bar. We sold nothing but beer, wine, liquor, no food. To me, my definition, that's a bar. It's a nightclub. We're talking about a restaurant that is a full-service restaurant, basically. No different than any other restaurants around.
How many numbers have you called in the last couple of years?
Excuse me?
The last two years, how many calls you said you had? How many calls were there to the, to the hotel? How many calls? Yeah, you did it.
Is that related to, that's a question for the chief?
Do you? I thought you said you had broke up with her.
No, I've only been there for a little bit of a period of time. What I've read was everything that was provided by the chief of police.
We just read this. All this, we didn't know, all this, we checked it, me and him discussed it, and hardly in there. If you read this book, you will know that hardly in there. It's not much criminal in there or drugs in there. You've got the whole report. Please read that, you will understand there is not like.
Mr. Patel, one of the things that concerns me is it seems to be, when you look at these reports that start in 2015 and they go forward through 2016 and all the way until August of 2017, is there seems to be an escalation of what is being found at your establishment. And it's going, you know, from finding paraphernalia to possession with intent to distribute, just over and over again, from methamphetamine, 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 and then possession of heroin with intent to distribute, possession of marijuana.
As Mr. Patel wanted me to-
This concerns me in what this does to our city. What, whether or not you allow, I think is irrelevant. You own this business, you're the one that has got to make a change. The police department can only do so much. And then from that point, it is your establishment.
Establishment, yes, sir. Whatever they need help, I will help. Ask this policeman, did I help them anyway? They wanted, we did. We got the, he's got the two guys, think operation, we did there, in the place. He wants to, because I can put those two people and go in room, knock, get them out. We did that. So we helped them, where they want. You can ask this policeman right there, Mike. We did that, we helped them to get them out. That's my goal too. What they am, it's my goal, it shouldn't be there. But it's nothing, you can check every person. Okay, you got drugs? No, we cannot do that in this kind of business.
How many times do you call, sir?
How many times I call police?
Do you call the police? Yes, sir.
I call at least five, five times.
Five times?
Yes.
Over what period of time?
About a year.
Thank you.
I noticed that, I heard you say there were only two times, but I just counted eight incidences. Not all of them drugs, I agree with that. But eight incidences that the police had to come since you've taken over. I didn't even count anything past August 16th.
Those I was, I was talking about drugs. That's what they were talking about, drugs. That's what. Small incidents, they're going to have, oh, somebody hit my car, this, they run away, this, that, I lost this. Those things is going to be there anyway.
But that, those things were not somebody bumping into a car. We, you expect that to happen, parking lot issues, things like that. Those are sort of routine, but these were things that involved the people that were staying in your hotel.
I mean, they're staying, they go into rooms, there's somebody else, they got piled up, they come in, police come in, they get them out. Yes, they do.
Yeah.
I mean, that's nothing like, I don't want more than four people in my room anyways. But they pile up afterwards, it's so hard to control them. I go and, I go and see it myself on those rooms. And if I seen it, I can't even go over there. I want to call police before I got protection, before I go in there, get them out. I did that. Because they got like 50 people in one room. We seen it. We've seen it. I tell them to get them out. That's all I can do. If they want refund, I give it a refund. But get them out. That's what I tell them. What else I could have done?
We understand that you can't control that.
It's very hard. And it's, you know, every hotel you go in there, that's a problem in Milledgeville. Milledgeville has the highest drugs they got. And we see that. That's why I feel. Every hotel you go and, I look at in the newspaper, Comfort Inn Suite, they had last time in the newspaper. Those things is, I can't help it. I mean, best way we can help, I put more cameras, I open to the camera, every time policeman come, they want to see the camera, I go and help them, ask them. You can ask, there's one policeman here. One guy flush the toilet, in the toilet, ask Mike and this guy. I went there myself, get snake, whatever they need to pull this out, to get that guy longer time in their jail, so they won't just get him out and go back into the, in the Milledgeville. What else I could do? I mean, whatever they tell me, I do it. You know, I like to help. I don't like drugs in my property either. Nobody will. If you're running the business, you won't either.
Yeah.
You know, that's the way I'm running. But it's very hard. Three years ago, we had three partners on these properties. We changed it to one, we split it out every day. Now, I own since August, August 16th, 2016, I own this Super Inn. Before, I had four of them, partnership, everybody's on partner. I used to go in Jacksonville, I used to go in Kingsland, Georgia, Lord. So I had to run around, you know, when you have multiple properties, you've got to run around. Now I got only one. Other ones, my son's running himself, everything, he runs it. So I got more focus on these places and I will try to do it best I could. I mean, what else you going to do if you are in business? You want to go up? I want to go up. But this is not fair for me to saying, okay, you denied for gifts.
Can I say something? I understand that you've been an advocate, because this is your livelihood. But I have a serious, serious concern when we're putting together drugs, we're putting together alcohol, we're putting together prostitutes, most of all, our children. I'm thinking about our young children. To have this mixture and have all this together, you have been very blessed that anything, nothing serious has happened. I'm an advocate for young children.
It's nothing, although this, this is a, big people doing this. Drug people are just, the young ones not doing it, this is big people.
Yeah, but these drugs and all this type of stuff that is going on, it can affect our children, it can get a hold to our children.
I agree with it. But they got to stop, they got to increase the police or whatever in Milledgeville to get this going. If they can't do it, they got to increase more people or do something to get drugs out in this Milledgeville. We need to do that. We need help.
But the police department-
You guys can do it, I can't do it. Only one person can do it. You got to work together to get going.
Let me ask you a question. Is there no way that you can do your restaurant for six months and then come, come back for a review for license and see if that's, if everything is working well?
Problem is, right now, if I hired him and other people, I don't think only restaurant's going to support that. All employee cannot support in restaurant business right now.
So it's just-
Too many restaurants in Milledgeville.
Okay. So you're saying that it has to be a sports bar and grill?
Both together.
Okay.
Yes, that's the only way I can survive. I want able to afford $3,700 for the license fee. $3,700 I'm paying city to get the license. Plus other taxes I got paid is that it has to be, check the numbers, how much we're going to get it. And that's what I'm trying. He said he can do it. I said, okay, let's try it. That's all we came up with. I wasn't doing this for four years, it's sitting there. His business is sitting there. Nobody's doing nothing on it. Okay? But I was trying to lease this place to him and that Cowboy Bill. They closed that place right next to me. They had the bar only, but, and they closed that place and they opened the fireworks place. But then they moved, I thought maybe we can get that business to, put them together, maybe I will get success on that business. That's why I told him, go ahead, you can, you manage it over there, you're going to manage it here and get me all that business there. Because my business is dropped completely. When he was running Cowboy Bill, I used to get 20 rooms that night, 20 to 28 rooms. I used to get, right now, I lost completely. I got like seven, eight rooms right now. I lost the business on that. So I was trying to survive on this motel business to get, open up this. That's what I was trying to do. It's not just surviving. I cannot survive with this, what I'm doing right now.
How's your hotel doing?
Hotel doing way down right now. You go on right now, check, it's seven rooms right now. I can't even afford employees right now. I thought maybe this will bring little, you know, a few more rooms so I can survive on this. I have, you know, all that money I've earned these years, I've been working for 40 years in this country, I put everything into it, this place.
I have a question for Chief Swanker. I noticed that the last incident that we have was August. That was the, August 22nd was possession of heroin with intent to distribute. What, this is November now, what, has anything else taken place since that time?
Obviously, it never had been.
Is it something you can't discuss?
I probably could lean that to Officer Thompson, but yes, we, I couldn't compile enough to get into the book. So I mean, this is, this is a once-a-week issues. And this is not, you know, this is, this is an ongoing thing. And Mr. Harry, we talked, yeah? When he says he's compliant with us, yes, he is. We've had numerous operations where we went in and it's got botched, because we don't want to do any damage to his property. But we've tried to work with him, but it's, it's an ongoing thing. But yes, there's, we just made a rest, I don't know if y'all saw this recently in the paper, where a person who was released from River Bean Correction Institution was staying at Mr. Harry's place and was running scam through California. And it's an ongoing thing. I mean, it's, it's a haven for, obviously, for people who can't afford a expensive motel. But we've, we've talked about that, saying that his clientele is different in what he gathers. But that's the trouble you get when you do that. I mean, he obviously knows that. So we've talked numerous times.
And we increased the rate?
And he says he's increased the rate to try to curb that issue. But I can tell you that everything that, from August now, is, we could probably make another book.
Okay. Okay.
So just looking at comparable facilities that are in the same price range, what, what's your competition in Millisville? As far as that's price range, that discount room that you-
I got lowest rate that before.
Uh-huh.
Forty-six, forty, I had all this year, I never increased one penny of that.
Mayor, I can, I can answer that. Uh, whether Mr. Harry is not owner of the, I don't know what the name of the place is now, it's not O'Connell Lodge, but-
Relaxing now.
Okay.
That's his owner's right here.
The same issues occur.
Right.
Straight across from Walmart, if y'all familiar with that location. We, we, um, have issues with employees who go from that motel, hotel, to this hotel. The same issues occur, we just, we just switch, we just switch rooms.
Right.
So, uh-
Is that, is this, is this a phenomenon for that discount hotel room that's prevalent?
That's the reason we increased the rate. So I took his suggestion, I increased the rate. But I'm losing business.
Right.
It's okay though, I'm gonna survive. But it's all, you can ask him how many other hotels in Millisville he had problem with. That's what I wanna ask.
I, I, I'm not saying we don't have issues with other hotels.
And she in and all that, you look at it yourself or something.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think-
Too many, I can't do that.
I think what I'm hearing is that-
Not, but you can look at it-
You still, you have problems with similar hotels, but you may not have an alcohol license that-
Only one of my hotels got the bar and restaurant inside, in the separate unit. Nobody's got it. Mine is biggest too, and the whole Millisville, this hotel in Millisville.
I got you.
Chief Swiker, FMA, how, how, how does this particular hotel, the Super Inn and Suites, compare with other hotels in the community? Do you, do you see this one in particular, it stands out more?
Well, obviously, we have, uh, you know, obviously, the Super Inn used to be Motel Six prior to that.
I mean, I mean, it's-
American's best?
American's best, I mean, it's, it's changed several times, several- But anyway, uh, that, O'Connell Lodge, which is across from Walmart, uh, there, there's, uh, there's one, maybe two more that we have issues with. And we're gonna have, listen to me, we, we are gonna have issues. The issue that I denied alcohol license was, was the establishment he was trying to create to allow people of all ages to come and enjoy themselves. You can't have that environment and bring these people in, you can't do it. And, uh, me and Mr. Harry's talked several times, and I've asked, actually had the suggestion was, I said, Lola, let's see if your restaurant, we're not denying your restaurant license, we're not denying your business license, I'm denying your alcohol license. See if it'll work. He obviously says it won't, will not work without alcohol, so, uh, you know, uh, that's, that's the reason we're here.
Thank you, Chief. Attorney Jordan, what is the process by which we may begin examining a license that is currently held for revocation? How would one go about revoking a license if it were issued?
Through the same process.
This would be the same process?
There would be a notification, uh, of revocation, and then the, uh, owner of the license would have a right to come have a hearing just like this, call witnesses and, uh, subject to cross-examination, and just same, the same process. It would just be notifying them that based on whatever issues there were, that, uh, the city had made a decision to revoke the license.
Have we ever had a case for revocation brought before us?
No, we have had a, uh, an apple, the only, in, in my tenure at City of Millisville, uh, going back to 1984, we've had, we've had, uh, to my knowledge, had one alcohol license, uh, consumption on the premises, uh, denied, uh, previously.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chief Swiker, I'm assuming what you're, what you're speaking to is that you've got a bad situation, bringing alcohol component into it would, would most likely make it worse.
That's correct, yes, sir.
That's what you're saying. Mr. Patel, do you have any other witnesses you'd like to bring tonight to discuss? You got anybody else that you wanna speak?
You need to stand up to go to the podium.
Are you gonna be giving testimony?
Yeah, it was here.
I need to swear you in.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I had a question, uh, these other motels in Millisville, we said, you know, with the same, uh, close price range, you know, we've had problems with, uh, they've had problems with drugs also. There is one downtown that I feel like is in the same range and is in the newspaper, you know, quite a bit also. It is less than, it's about a block or two, or a couple blocks away from downtown, you got all these bars right there too.
Sure.
So, the restaurant that my dad's trying to open is in a separate building. There is no, you know, corridor that you can go from, straight from the rooms to the restaurant by itself. You have to come through the front entrance. So, I'm, I'm just trying to relay that there is distance in between rooms and the restaurant. There is no access to the restaurant, you know.
It's exterior corridor building?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Breeze ways, connecting buildings and things of that nature?
The building that the restaurant is in is not connected to any of the other buildings on the premises.
It's, it's not connected, but there's an exit door that, that goes right out to the other rooms? Have you locked that door off, that, by the banquet, by the banquet room?
That door stays locked unless there is a, uh, party booked in the hall. We have a banquet hall inside the same building.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So unless somebody rents out that hall, then there's no access on that back door. And we only open it if they ask us to open it so they could bring in their, like, catering food or whatever it is.
So if someone was staying in a room, they could come around to the front entrance and come into the restaurant?
Front, front entrance, yes.
Okay.
They have to go through the parking lot and through the front entrance. Well, it would be visible from, the, the front entrance is visible from the road, 441, or North Columbia.
Right. But, but they would have access to the restaurant?
Yes, they would have to come through the main entrance like, you know, everyone else.
And if someone was in the restaurant and they decided they wanted to have a room, they could come out of the restaurant?
There is a separate, separate entrance to the front desk.
Okay.
Separate entrance to go to the-
We plan to keep the door closed from the, uh, restaurant to the front desk. They would have to go around.
Room is completely separate.
All, all the rooms are on a separate complete building.
I understand what you're, my point is that even if you have separate buildings, there is still access for everyone to co-mingle, to move back and forth between rooms, between restaurant, uh, outside, whatever. Whether, whether or not you have separate buildings, uh, still within the proximity of what you're looking at in my mind, the alcohol situation, as the chief has explained, and putting that into the mix of what is already there, is still a concern. But whether or not there is a separate building or what?
What he's trying to tell is these people has a bar and restaurant right here, in Millisville, right here across the street. He's got right next to it, still is not a problem, but it's a separate building has a problem, that's what he's trying to tell.
Understand.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna, he said right next to it, right here, all this business, other business is running, they don't have problems with that, but this one has a problem. He should, if it's this bar, is a, they found that too many drugs, they deliver all drugs and everything in this Millisville downtown. What is that bar name? We read that in the newspaper?
Uh, he's-
That's what he's talking about. What he's saying is, right next to that, he, they closed it for one, two days or something, and they opened right back to it, and none of the other businesses got problems causing. And only this, this is separate building, and still you guys causing trouble, that's what he's trying to tell.
And I, I think in, uh, in my mind, if you were three blocks away-
Yeah.
Or four blocks away, then that might be a different consideration, even if you owned both businesses.
This is like next to it, like not even two feet, only, this, this bar business is-
I'm not sure where you're speaking of.
He's, he's referring to the apartments in which the raid on Capital City-
Capital City, right here.
Took, took place, the apartments are directly like, right next door and kinda above.
But they aren't rented out by the night?
No, sir.
Okay.
Uh, uh, I, I was, uh, speaking about the, there's another motel that's downtown, a couple blocks away, yes.
Right. But several blocks away.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Jordan, you have any rebuttal witnesses?
Uh, no, city does not.
With that being the case, then evidence on this, uh, hearing is closed. I will now give each side an opportunity to make a closing argument. Mr. Patel, you can go first if you have a closing argument.
Which is basically what I said before, he just wanted to relay that it's two separate entities, it's two separate businesses on the same property. His question also is, so you deny him an alcohol license, now he has restaurant lease space, does that mean you're gonna deny everybody? Or anybody that wants to lease that restaurant space an alcohol license? Because of what may or may not be going on on the other side of the property. He also wanted me to bring forth, uh, the issue about, uh, you take any restaurant in the parking lot, and there's another business next door to it, where there's drug activity, are you gonna deny them their license, or are you gonna suspend them their license? And the perfect example is, uh, that rest place that we're talking about downtown that got raided, uh, selling drugs out of there nationwide, shipping them out nationwide. And yet, nobody even recommended a suspension and/or revocation. He would kindly ask that the board issue his alcohol license, fall under the alcohol rules and regulations. Certainly, under those alcohol rules and regulations, the police department is, has access to commit to any establishment that sells alcohol and look around and inspect. And he actually welcomes that. If there are any violations, then a recommendation can be made for a suspension and/or revocation. And if the restaurant, he's basically giving the restaurant a six-month trial period to see if it's gonna make any money. If it's not gonna make any money, it's gonna fold up anyway. At that time, he would just, you know, not renew any licenses. Unless of course, somebody else wanted to lease the space, then we're into this whole other issue again. Now you're tying him just, you're tying up his business potential basically by not issuing an alcohol license, because now he has lease space, if you don't give it to him, there's somebody else that's gonna wanna lease it, and are they gonna be issuing an alcohol license? And the whole reason I became involved, I'll begin with, is because Mr. Harry Patel tried to get, uh, Calvin, Mike Puckett, and myself to lease that space. It's not exactly the direction we wanted to go into. Mike had other aspirations, and I just decided to go back into my old, other field and do what I was doing. Until I was actually about ready to pull out of town when, uh, Mr. Patel approached me. And, uh, there have been alcohol licenses on that location before also. Years and years ago, it was Justin's, and I guess not, not that long ago, there was a Mexican restaurant there, and there weren't any. Anyway, in closing, he would just like to say, he would ask the board to kindly issue his alcohol license, fall under the alcohol rules and regulations. If there are any violations, then he will deal with that at that time. Uh, if there's a suspension or a revocation, then so be it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jordan, do you have any closing statement?
Yes, very, very beautifully. First of all, it's, it's, in essence, it's not two separate businesses. The same people that are gonna be running this hotel that has the problems that it has are also gonna be running the restaurant. That, that's the evidence here. This is not about Mr. Patel being, being a bad person, uh, not running his hotel like he sees, sees fit. It's about mixing alcohol, creating a problem that currently doesn't exist. We don't have alcohol there right now. We got a lot of problems there, uh, as you can see hearing from the chief and seeing from the exhibits that have been admitted into evidence. But we don't have alcohol there, that's one problem we don't have to deal with there. It would behoove Mr. Patel to clean his hotel up, come back to see us, show us the progress that he has made, and then he can be considered at that point for an alcohol license. The chief, we don't have a lot of these applications that are disapproved. So we've got to see from this evidence, Chief Swiker obviously has a lot of concern about what's going on at this hotel, that he doesn't wanna have to deal with the issues and have his officers deal with the issues, the public safety issues of alcohol. And you should uphold the chief's decision and deny this application at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair will now entertain motions from counsel on this matter, and the form stated in your booklet.
Mr. Mayor, based upon the evidence presented, I make a motion to uphold the decision of the city denying Mr. Patel's application for the issuance of a 2017 alcohol license.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
The motion is approved. The application is denied. Having no further business to discuss tonight, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
Hearing no objection, we stand adjourned.